Testing 123. This will be the June 15, 2016 City Council Regular Meeting.
I feel like when I come to that.
Oh, boy.
Depends on you.
Oh.
Ready?
All right.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order of regular meeting at the City Council of Satellite Beach, June 15, 2016, approximately 7:00 p.m. Please join Vice Mayor Brymer in a moment of silence and a pledge.
Right, for a moment of silence. And please remember the events that occurred in Orlando with the shooting and obviously the other one was the loss of that portion on the side of the Disney Canal. I think we'll remember that one too. Let's have a moment of silence. Thank you if you'll join me in the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to next agenda item, number three, citizens' comments for non-agenda items. Floor is open. Hearing them back to council, city council comments, which Council Commissioner Nola would like to start this one. Tough week. For all of those who know Rodney Smith, Rodney suffered a stroke the other day on Friday, and he's doing okay. He's in rehab, so please keep him in your prayers and his family. Another one, a real tough one, Robert Roman passed away today, a young kid in our town. Grew up here. Keep his family in your prayers. A great kid. His family, one of the surfing communities, fishing communities. Great young man, unfortunately leaves behind, beautiful wife and two small young children. So, hate to start off with that, but I wanted everyone to know. I attended a pretty interesting event on Saturday at FIT, Space Coast League of Cities, I'm going to call it Indian Lagoon Summit. There's a lot of people who are very interested in getting things going. And we broke out into little groups and so forth, and the participation was very good. There was approximately 125 people that attended from local cities, counties, not only our county, but Indian River and Martin County. So, it was very good. Steve, anybody?
No, I'll leave the Space Coast League of Cities to Dom since he was the star of the show for that. The only other thing I'll talk about is I did go to the Florida National Space Club that they had the luncheon on Tuesday, where this week talking with the general, that was Frank DeBello that was there, and had a lot of talking about the community and what the state of Florida is investing an awful lot of money into trying to bring space companies here, space manufacturing companies here, to get everybody else back to work, and talked about how the DOD and NASA are limitations because of Congress money, that the state has actually been picking up a lot of that and putting a lot of the money in the bucket to get a lot of that working. So, hearing that after what we heard in Space Coast League of Cities and the general and what they're trying to do for launches out here was very promising, at least for our community, hiring people, bringing business in here, trying to be number one in the space competition race of getting everybody here. So, I thought that was really good, and I said that was a good addition to what we heard on Monday night. That was all. Thank you.
Mr., I don't have anything. Thank you.
I attended the Space Coast League of Cities meeting on Monday night, and I'm the second vice president for the Space Coast League of Cities, and it's, I get all the speakers and I get to introduce them also. So, General Montieth was our speaker this month, and I'll tell you, if you've never met General Montieth or if you've never heard him speak, he's a pretty dynamic individual. And he went over the PowerPoint presentation that they presented and outlined some of the things that they are looking forward to doing there. And their schedule for 2017 for launches is phenomenal. We're probably going to see more things going up in the air in 2017 than we've probably ever seen here. A lot of it is private concerns also, besides the NASA projects that go up and the Air Force projects and the DOD projects that go up there. So, it was pretty good. And I also thanked him for, you know, working with our mayor and our city manager on the P4 initiatives because he's been instrumental in, you know, outreach that goes on here in Satellite Beach. And he's probably one of the more involved generals that we have had at Patrick Air Force in a long time. So, it's really nice to have him there. He's going to be there for two years. You know, I think he's going to be an asset to us as time goes on. So, it was great having him there, and it was a good meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any further council comments? Thank you, Aaronson. Moving on to agenda item five, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to make sure that council and the community is aware that there is a benefit for Robert Roman. This coming Monday, June 20, it starts at noon until well into the evening. There'll be bands and raffles and a lot of giveaways at that event. Ricky Carroll has been organizing that, so it's at his factory, if I'm not mistaken, at Gus Hip Boulevard in Rockledge. So, if anybody's interested in that, those details, just let me know and I'll give those to you. We also have on June 24, the Satellite Beach Youth Musical Theater Group will perform their production of Seussical the Musical. That always makes me laugh when I say it. That starts at 7:00 at the DRS Community Center Gym, and it is free, but they're accepting donations for that event. In terms of government events, the Public Service Commission will be holding a service hearing on Thursday, tomorrow, and that will start at 9:30. This service hearing is regarding the 24 percent rate increase that FPL is requesting from the Public Service Commission. They will be accepting public comments on that, but if you are not able to go, in my report, you'll see an email address as well as a letter, mailing address for a letter if you wish to comment on that. The rate increase, if you go to FPL's website, you'll see their version. If you go to the Public Service Commission website, you'll see just the factual version of what that's about. I did speak with the FPL representatives and found that in that rate increase, they will, they are not including the lobbying against solar initiatives in that rate structure. Apparently their shareholders reserve their own funds for lobbying efforts like that, but included in the rate structure is their fracking initiative. They don't do any fracking in the state of Florida, however, they do it in Louisiana and other parts of the country, and that is for natural gas exploration. So, I'm assuming that council, since you did pass an anti-fracking resolution as well as supported the counties and Denver for anti-fracking ordinance, that that would be something you'd be concerned with as your customers paying for, or, you know, our residents paying for, they have to pay for fracking initiatives throughout the country as part of their rates. If I'm wrong, let me know. The League of Cities is requesting our elected officials to begin signing up for policy committees, and the Florida League of Cities has an online forum to do that. We will sign you up for you to make that easier for you, so just let us know which committees you would like to serve on. I think I know which one the mayor serves on with me with the Energy, Environmental and Natural Resources.
I do, I do Herbert Administration.
Administration? Okay.
I think mine was Transportation, if I'm not mistaken.
We do have our controller that usually sits on the finance taxation, since nobody else usually wants to sit on that one. Is there any, Mark, did you want to go to this? You went last time, so.
I can do that. The one I think is left is the growth management.
Growth Management?
Yeah, let's do that, Courtney.
Okay, thank you. Let me ease it. Okay, we'll get you signed up for that as well as the upcoming conference in August. We did receive another thank you note complimenting Sergeant Anderson for the Pelican rescue. Apparently when you're on the beach, there's a lot of people in the condos that see you, so the thank you letters keep pouring in for that rescue. And the police department keeps giving him little Pelican trinkets and things like that as another thank you. I did receive another note complimenting our fire department and services provided to our residents. That thank you note came from Bud Mayer. And if you received your statement of financial interest forms, those are due in the next couple of weeks, so if you do them now, then you don't have to worry about it.
How are you doing?
They need to do it. So, okay? Everybody got theirs done?
Mine's in.
Okay. And now we would like to ask Mr. Carlo Arvore to come up so we can thank him profusely for this donation to the police department and our fire department. Am I saying your name right?
Right here, ma'am.
Right there.
Right here, all right. I just wanted to, on behalf of the Satellite Beach Fire Department and the Police Department, want to thank you for your generous donation. I know we spoke on the porch, and you said a lot of very nice things, and I thought one of the most compelling things that you said that I thought was important to share was you said that you had been in this community a long time, and this community had given a lot to you, and that you were now in a position to be able to give back to the community. And that was the very first thought you had and one of the very first things that you did. And that's just an outstanding sentiment, and I don't really know how to thank someone that thinks like that other than to say thank you and to let the public know just how much we appreciate not only the people that are like you and you specifically for thinking of us and being our community and helping us, because just like you said, that money can be used to benefit the entire community. Everything that is spent on is going to directly benefit the people of this city. So, you not only donate that money to the fire department and the police department, but you donate it to the community and for that right there. Just as a small token, I thought you might enjoy this. This just says, "In grateful appreciation for supporting our community, Satellite Beach Police Department," and it's got one of our patches. And on behalf of the mayor, the council, the city manager, we would just like to give you that and say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to get some more. That's all I can say. All right, there's $20 million southbound in the middle of the city. If I didn't mention, you're going to get a lot of money from this.
Well, I wanted to do a bronze statue of the mayor in front of City Hall, but they said they should suspend it otherwise. He was talking about how he knew your father back before the meeting started.
Everyone has a kidney choice for someone.
That's better than my name.
Yes. Thank you very much. We'll have to talk for it.
I didn't come here to gift this. I came here because now I have time to come to meetings. And you might get tired of seeing me here.
No, keep coming.
The more the mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Very much a thank you.
And for those of you that didn't know, Mr. Arvore gave $100,000 to the police department and $100,000 to the fire department, and that represents the largest donations we've ever received from any residents. So, thank you.
$100,000 to the sheriff.
And $100,000 to the sheriff, wow, that's awesome.
Thank you again very, very much.
That's all I have.
Okay, any further questions for the city manager?
Yes, sir.
Courtney, thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item six, discuss take action on an agreement between the city of Satellite Beach and Mark Quayblon for skate park marketing services.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'll give you a little background. We, back in September of 2015, the city released a request for qualifications to find a firm to provide essentially management services for the skate park and some marketing services. The primary focus though was management operation essentially of the skate park. We went through that process, selected out of that process Mark Quayblon to provide that service, but we held off on moving forward because we're also moving the project forward that you're familiar with to renovate the skate park. And we did some public interaction meetings, get some feedback from our citizens on that, and the end result was the city decided to move forward only with the skate park marketing portion of that original request for qualifications process that we selected Mark Quayblon out of. The purpose for that is we want to, you know, really start generating some more interest in the skate park. We also want to document the process of the renovations that will be starting later this summer, and we want to do that for approximately a six-month window period of time to get the community engaged, keep them watching the skate park, let them see what's happening, and then really gear up once the renovations are completed. And at that point, we'll come back to you to discuss further the management of the skate park and how that will proceed. But long and short of it though, and here is, the marketing services we're proposing here and we're requesting your permission to proceed on includes the development of an actual branding essentially for the skate park, which would be a logo and a, you know, tagline, a name that would be designated for the skate park, something that set it apart essentially. It would be the development of a website specific to the skate park as well as use of a number of social media sites to promote skate park as well. And then there would be a variety of essentially events that the firm would be asked to provide to, again, promote the skate park and the use of it. For all of this, Mark Quayblon worked really well with the city on the negotiations of the prices, especially given this was just sort of a short-term initial burst on the skate park work. So, he's going to, the contract calls for a one-time lump sum payment of $600 for the upfront initial setup of things like the website and the social media pages and development of the brand and things like that, all of which the city will own. And then ongoing after that initial lump sum payment is a monthly service fee of $450. So, we felt we're getting a very good deal, and we appreciate him working with us. So, the total estimated cost for the first six months of the contract is $3,150. We have that in the budget, and like I said, we'll evaluate where we go in terms of the management of the skate park once we've completed the renovations, and we're expecting more community feedback during that process as well, which will lead us to determine how we run the skate park once it's reopened and fully renovated. With that, I'll answer any questions. And I should also say you, I believe, have or received via email a swap out of page four of the contract. I mistakenly left a couple of references in the insurance portion of that page to a prior vendor. We'd used that same language, so I apologize for that, but we did change that out, and you have the revised page there.
So, the revised page is 5.5, right, on that?
Yeah, that section, that is the paragraph that was affected.
Okay, first.
Mark Quayblon is here. If you want to ask him any questions as well.
First, is there any questions from council? Okay, so, Mark's going to get going now for the first six months, and at which time skate park will be start renovating, correct? We'll start renovating.
Right, we're hoping to start renovations in the August timeframe.
And at that point, we'll come back and revisit this.
After the skate park.
After the skate park.
Yeah, there's some.
Construction is complete.
I mean, there's decisions on the management of the skate park that are dependent on the design and construction of the skate park. So, it's hard to write a contract for a management of the skate park when we don't know how it's going to be managed in the future. So, there's some, you know, pretty critical pieces that are missing right now. And I think at this point, when we, if we wanted to bring the marketing in largely because, like Suzanne said, we wanted to document the construction portion of the project, but also we wanted Mark to be able to basically create the kickoff media, the kickoff events, the grand opening, all of the exciting things that would go along with the skate park reopening. And, you know, he's just, he's got a really good track record of events, and because we wanted, we wanted to kind of capitalize on that instead of trying to do that on our own.
Great. Any further questions?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign a contract with Mark Quayblon for skate park marketing services.
Second? I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Anozmar. At this time, I'll open up agenda item six for public comment. The floor is open. Hearing no public comment, back to council. Any further council comments?
No.
More?
Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Anozmar?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes, motion passes. Mark, good luck. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to agenda item seven, discuss take action on ordinance number 1119.
Ordinance number 1119, an ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending sections 30-416B and 30-416D Satellite Beach City Code to change self-storage facilities from prohibited uses to allowed uses with restrictions in the city's C Commercial zoning district, providing severability, providing repeal of inconsistent provisions, and providing an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 1119.
Thank you.
Motion to approve ordinance number 1119 on first reading.
Second? I have a motion by Vice Mayor Brymer, second by Councilman Anozmar. Discussion, John?
Yes, good evening, everyone. The applicant who owns Atlantic Managed Storage is, they're wanting to expand their operation, and currently the existing location they have at 249 and 250 Scorpion Court are considered non-conform in uses simply because they are prohibited uses. Therefore, they could not expand their existing operations. They can only maintain what they have. To the east of them is a bank building that's been vacant for about a year now, 100 Scorpion Court. And so, their intention is to purchase the building, level the building, expand the services they offer, many stores essentially, as well as a reception area. And so, basically, that's what they're looking for. It has been through the planning and board, the comprehensive planning board, and has been reviewed by the city planner, and they find no conflicts with the comprehensive plan in this request. Bruce Moya from MBV Engineering is here representing the applicant. He's here to field any questions you might have.
John, I have a concern. I brought it up to Courtney this morning. You know, we're looking at that piece of property, and if there's some way that we can come to some negotiation on some type of a right of way or an easement through that property to access Pelican Coast, it would alleviate some of the traffic on A1A for the people that eventually would be in that area, whether it be bicycle, pedestrian, or vehicle traffic, to be able to access Atlantic Plaza without having to get on A1A. If there's some, if there's some way we can work out some type of a developers' agreement on that, I think it would be beneficial to not only the residents in the interior part of the city, but for the people that live in Montecito and the people that are going to be on Pelican Coast to have to not get on A1A. I'm not sure exactly how the dynamics and the engineering would work out, but if that's something that we could look at, I think it would be beneficial.
Yeah, I, actually, I think it's an excellent idea both from access management, particularly since DOT is going to be coming through and putting that pedestrian refuge that pretty much is going to go from Scorpion to Shearwater, and it's going to limit some of the accesses midway down A1A, as well as, you know, that, it's not much of a town center now, but that really is the core of our city. And I, like you, I think I see the expansion of that town center area moving in that direction if, you know, the right project comes along. I have briefly talked about it with Mr. Moya, and he's here to discuss it with you further.
Question there was different than Anozmar, the impression. So, are you planning on knocking the bank building down?
Yeah, I think that's what it was. Yes, sir. For the record, Bruce Moya with MBV Engineering representing the applicant, that the idea would be to knock the building down, probably pretty much clear the site and build a storage facility as opposed to what's there as the existing bank. We did speak a little bit about what you're talking about here. There'll be a challenge, I'm not going to lie. It's a great idea, and I understand exactly why you have that, because you've got the plaza there and you've got the potential for the residential to the north to come through without going on to A1A. The only, this can be tricky because this is a secure site because the stores will be fencing and the gate as opposed to like if it was the bank, you could just punch the driveway right through, and they would already be able to go back and forth. It wouldn't be that much of a problem. We're just concerned that it's such a small site and to provide that might really limit the developability of the site. If it's feasible and we can make it work and it doesn't really injure us in any way, I don't see why we wouldn't entertain that, and we'll work with staff to come up with something like that. I just don't know how successful we'll be, but we'll definitely try.
Thank you. Questions from council?
Just one. I'll use these words, cosmetic appearance. I mean, it's maybe a little bit closer to A1A and that sort of thing. Not that the other facilities aren't gorgeous, but can we improve on what we have there now? I mean, how's it going to look?
Yeah, actually, it's a very good point and something I neglected to mention. It's in the memo, and that's what the property is located within the CRA. Therefore, it would be required to meet all the architectural design guidelines, landscaping. You know, this is new construction, not only new construction, but new construction in the CRA. So, the standards are going to be much higher.
Okay. Because, you know, what's there now is great for what's there, but I just hate to see that come towards A1A. That depends.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
My question is not per that site specific, but this ordinance right here, how it affects other areas or vacancies in our city.
Okay. The language that was crafted by Mr. Moya basically came out of discussions that we had and the concerns that we have. I mean, obviously, it was taken out of the code for a reason. It was moved into prohibited because we didn't want the proliferation of storage units. So, we moved it to the permitted use, permitted uses with conditions, two conditions primarily. One is to be one and a half acres or greater, and the second one being that that property could not abut A1A or South Patrick. So, it's already assumed it has to be commercial. So, once you dial in those three factors, you really don't have a lot of opportunities. Probably the only one I think right now that out of the gate could fit that, well, no, because it abuts A1A.
But the back portion, is it narrow way, East Minute to the back?
That's the zone RM2.
Okay.
So, that one, but the old post office, Linda Page's lot to the west of the old post office. I don't know that she's got five acres. If not, she's really close to that. So, potentially, that might be one. I mean, I have looked up and down the corridor, and then really the biggest challenge that they've presented is that it can't be on A1A or South Patrick. So, they're substantially limited where that can be, and then, as you know, most of our lots are small in size, so, in fact, the only way that they're going to be able to do it is by buying the bank building. They currently don't have five acres.
I was just making sure where else this would, by doing this affects it.
Jim?
I just wanted to make this announcement. I don't know that it's an issue, but I think I should say it is, is I'm actually representing the seller in this transaction. But, I mean, we haven't been involved in any of the issues before the city, but I just felt I should add on the record.
Thank you very much. So, I guess one of the things that Dominic brought up is this easement.
We'll work with them to see if we can accommodate that.
So, if we start the process here on the first reading, that between the first reading and the second reading, which is two weeks away, you will bring back something. And if not, then that reading will be put off till we have it or we've got to make a decision.
I would say it was going to take more than two weeks.
Yeah, at least 30 days.
Yeah, I would say at least 30 days.
Just for everybody to know where we stand on it.
And you can do, you can have a separation between first and second reading about that time.
I just want to make sure. Could I do that? Further questions? Courtney, you have anything to add to it before I open up for public comment?
No, I think we just definitely need to sit down with the applicant because I think our ideas of what would happen and their ideas are a little separated right now, so when we get that, I think we'll ease a lot of their concerns when we meet with them.
Great, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
At this time, open up public, excuse me, agenda item seven for public comment. The floor is open. Hearing no comments, bring it back to council. Any further comments or a motion?
We've got a motion.
We've got the motion. Thank you. No further? Okay.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Anozmar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes, motion passed. Moving on to agenda item eight, if you will remember, there is addition to that, to it. Just take note. Number, agenda item eight, discuss take action of the construction of lighting along State Road A1A, which is a joint participation agreement between the state of Florida Department of Transportation and the city of Satellite Beach along with the resolution, which is number 970. Jim?
Resolution number 970, a resolution of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, authorizing execution of a joint participation agreement with the state of Florida Department of Transportation for the construction of lighting on State Road A1A and providing an effective date. So, reading a resolution number 970.
Thank you. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is basically a joint participation agreement, very similar to what we signed before where we were paying for the mast arms. However, in this instance, this is really, they're just having to run the cost of the lighting through us because DOT, for some legal reason, cannot contract directly with FPL. So, what they have to do is contract with us. So what they have to do is contract with us, we have to put FPL under contract, put in the lighting, send the invoice to DOT, and they will pay us back. Okay? So that's what this is in pretty simple terms. This lighting is directly related to the pedestrian refuges, and we're adding lighting there to call more attention to it and make sure that we ensure the safety of our residents.
Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to approve the joint participation agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation for the installation of pedestrian lighting.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro. Well, you wanna do one, I was under the impression we did the joint participation first and then.
I think you do both at the same time.
We can?
I can modify my motion to include the resolution 970.
Second? Motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Thank you. At this time, any comment from council? Open up for public comment on Agenda Item Number 8. Hearing none, bring it back to council. I must say, great job. I mean, this is something, Courtney, you guys have worked on it for a long time, and I think A1A by doing this is really gonna, we're gonna stand out over other areas that they're just repaving. It's really gonna make our city look nice, and I think safety also.
But this is actually stuff that came out of the meetings that we have in our community, and it's things that they wanted for, you know, to be able to traverse across A1A safely. So I agree with you.
It was really good, it was great, and I think working with, going up to Deland and working with DOT was a big help. And I really truly believe on that if we didn't go.
It wouldn't be happening.
Nothing would've been here. So.
Any further comment?
I appreciate the, putting the drawings in there, they're very nice. It was nice to relate to because I actually had someone ask me, you know, where exactly you talk about putting in lights. It was very nice, it was very easy, I pulled it out, as a matter of fact.
That was actually our request, they whined about it, said, "We gotta do drawings." I said, "Yeah."
But it was nice. Like I said, I did have somebody ask about lights out there, and it was, I mean, it was very timely. They asked me, I was able to whip out the diagrams, and matter of fact, lights are going, you know, right here and here, so that was good. I thank you for putting that in the back, it was a great help.
Thank you. Further comment? Hearing none, one more?
Councilman Osburn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttino?
Yes, motion passes. Courtney, thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 9, Discuss Take Action on a Drug-Free Workplace Policy.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we have before you today.
Suzanne, do me a favor. Switch mics. I think that mic right there, it didn't happen when John was talking, but when he spoke last time, you could hear it.
How's that? All right. Okay. What you have before you in your packet is a revised drug-free workplace policy. This is a policy that, to best of our knowledge, was last updated in 1994. So there have been some regulatory changes that required us to look at it initially, and then we just really just brought it up to current standards. The most important change that I would draw your attention to is something that you might find surprising, but there was actually some changes based on a court case in Florida that have led our attorney, Wayne Helsby, who's reviewed this and approved of it, to recommend that on our, on our application process, typically, we would do a drug screening for, as part of our background process. Applicants actually have an option now, based on that ruling, to decline to take the drug test, and employers are not permitted to not proceed with the hiring process because that applicant declined to take the drug test, which you might find somewhat unusual. We did, but we're bringing our policies up to reflect that. So essentially, at the bottom of one of the forms that a new hire would fill out, there's a section at the bottom that they can check off and say, you know, "I'm declining to do the drug test." What I will say that brings us assurance in terms of management of the employee population is this policy does what our previous policy always did, which is provides us with the opportunity to drug or alcohol test employees if we have reasonable suspicion, you know, that someone is under the influence of something that they shouldn't be under the influence of. So we have that option, we also have options in there that allow us to test employees if there is an accident. The one change to this, an accident on the job, workers' compensation type of claim, those types of things. The one change in here is that if an accident causes property damage of $500 or greater, that we will automatically test that employee just to be on the safe side. But beyond that, there's a list of things in the agenda memo that describe the changes we've made. It's a little bit longer because it includes expansive definitions section, it further clarifies for employees a list of prescription medications that they could be on, it could be flagged in the test, and it talks about procedures to advise the medical review officer or the officer doing the testing, the doctor doing the testing, to advise that person of whatever they're taking and talks through the process of how they go through that if they come up with a positive test, and they're explaining that they're on prescription meds, which would be an allowable, potentially allowable, item. And there's just a couple other places where we had to beef up the procedures. Bottom line is, this is a process that needed to take place, we're glad to have this policy updated. It was sent to the unions, we did not get any feedback on that, negative or positive, so we feel comfortable with where we're at and we're ready to implement this given your approval.
Suzanne, thank you very much. Questions from council?
I got one, and it's just about your CDL drivers.
Yes.
What is the, what kind of random drug testing? Is that something you do, monthly, annually?
In our case, it's essentially an annual process. There are, essentially, the federal government provides the directive on how we handle that, and there's essentially a little math equation you have to do.
Right.
Based on the number of employees you have in those types of positions, and it is a random process. So it's roughly going to occur a couple times a year in our case, based on the number of employees we have, which is two. So.
That's why I asked. Obviously, I'm under the same standard, and I know the first of every month, two guys somewhere within the whole company get chosen, in which they have to do alcohol and/or drug testing, that kind of rotates back and forth. That's what I was wondering. I know it said that you do it random, I didn't know, like I said, how many people you actually have.
They're just in public works, the fire department's actually exempt from that.
Okay, that's all I had.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? At this time, open up Agenda Item 9 for public comment.
Julie Enriken, resident. This isn't really gonna have anything to do with your vote because it's obviously a needed and required thing. I just believe that this is one of those feel-good things that's a big profit center for the people that conduct the testing, and it should be on a suspicion basis. It should not be carte blanche just because you're hiring somebody. We have the belief that people are innocent until proven guilty, but this changes that and it makes it guilty until proven innocent, and that's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. And any further public comment before I comment? Okay. Bring it back to council comments, any further counsel?
I'll make a motion to approve the revised drug-free workplace policy to be in compliance with current laws.
Second? I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Anozma. Further discussion? Suzanne, thank you very much for bringing this up to date, that's something we, a lot we needed to do, so thank you.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osburn?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 10, which is proposed agenda items for our July 6 meeting. So if you would please take a look over it, and if there's any additions or you need or would like to see on it, please get with Courtney. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, there is a revised addition from your packet here, so go ahead and motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the council meetings from the June 1 meeting, as submitted.
Second? I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Anozma. Further discussion? Hearing none, one more?
Are you saying just June 1st? There's three.
That's why I was hesitant there. There's May 18th.
1st and 1st.
As submitted, all of them.
Okay, second. Okay. Amended, Donald McMenney's motion.
Reminds the man in second.
Hold on.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osburn?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttino?
Yes, motion passes. Any further business before council?
I think the mayor beat Vice Mayor on meeting time this time.
Of course. We all knew it was dependent on the troublemaker.
Any further business? Hearing none, thank you all very much. We move to agenda.